Okay, you're on.
Morning, uh, here for this morning for a special week with budget workshop. Call of duty order.
Mr. Barnhart.
You want to pre- you want to preview agenda first? Preview agenda, please.
Any items from the public that record to the body here? Motion to approve the agenda. The move. Second. The public move, second all favors they are outside.
For you, if you want to walk down through, um, in touch, if I copied Eddie's column and then zeroed out the areas that were outside agencies, um, the first largest discrepancy that we have from you is, uh, the air force.
Air force, I had, uh, that was, uh...
Okay, and next one is... So, conservation district, everybody's at five thousand, they asked for ten.
Five thousand two.
Uh, children's home society asked for five, everybody else was at five. Two.
Yeah. Subject revision.
Okay, this is all working. Uh, alternatives to violence, they asked for twenty, uh, Jim's at five, Eddie's at ten, HD's... Uh, empowerment, no ask. Um, call of waste authority asked for one seventy-five, everybody's at zero, but Steve's fifteen, nine thirty. On one seventy?
Sure.
Um, their litter, they asked for fifteen, everyone else is at seventy-five hundred. Um, litter control, Mike Lang and Effort here, he asked for two, everybody gave him two. That's your internal, that buys their...
Yeah.
Kind of... Right underneath solid waste, uh, oh, well, that should be on the right side, Jim.
Oh, okay, solid waste litter.
Uh, no, it'd be on the right side. Right.
Oh, there.
These are easier to read.
I'll do two.
Hi, Jim.
Hey, you said, Jim, welcome back.
Yeah.
How you doing?
I'm doing much better.
All right, good.
So...
I can eat now. Yep.
Hotel motel, obviously half departure rate, their request from general fund, um... Uh, they asked for one ninety, Mr. Whitaker, zero, Eddie's at one forty-five, nine thirty. I left you at zero, HD's at zero, Steve's at a hundred.
Are you talking about general fund?
Yeah, yeah, capital, everyone's at zero, they asked for ninety thousand, eighty-nine, nine thirty-eight. Um, rock school asked for fifty thousand, nothing. Hollow asked for one eighty, everybody's at zero. There's discussion that we have, once you know what your number is. Uh, boys and girls club, they asked for fifty-four thousand, you have twenty-five hundred, five thousand, five thousand, and ten thousand. Groundhouse asked for thirty-six, four fifty-two. Nobody funded them, thirty-six, four...
Yeah, well, that was always just insurance. I was going about twenty. It's just insurance. Okay, insurance is thirty-six.
Okay.
Thirty-six, four...
They're taking thirty-one thousand now, just for... Uh, Morgan Cameron asked for six thousand, four hundred and forty-two, everyone gave them half of that. Um, Alpha Harbors asked for five, nobody funded them. Landmarks asked for seventy-three. Gave them seven.
That's cost of insurance.
And, uh, meals on wheels asked for five, everybody gave, well, most gave them twenty-five, Steve gave them five. And C cap asked for five. And hospice, five hundred, everybody, most everybody, but Jim Whitaker gave five, the others gave them twelve fifty.
I'm giving twelve.
Mark Trigunis asked for five. Uh, Casa asked for twenty, uh... Um, so EPTA asked for one fifty, everybody gave them seventy-five, I plugged that in there. Different. Head services. Senior services asked for seventy and everybody gave them twenty-five, I plugged you for twenty-five. So you need to cut fifty-four thousand, five seventy on yours. In there, all right, before you want to go out.
Health department.
I was waiting for seventy-five on the health department, so... I need to go get twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and seventy more for me. I need to go get twenty-nine thousand, five or seven more for me. The solid waste.
That's already there for that. Big backbeat.
Now you got twenty thousand, four thirty, Mr. Whitaker.
Give it back to the health department. What was it? Five more.
I thought you wanted to go around it as well. All right, Mr. Barnhart, you're balanced right at this second. If you want to put it to the top and come down, or anybody know what they want to do with their stuff, or you want to start popping in? Hey, Steve, you and Mr. Whitaker have money left in you there. Oh, Mr. Barnhart, you're, um, you did it, and I'll give you the same. You're funding nothing in contingency account. So, what happens is if you get any requests between now...
Yeah.
...hurt. Make the health department back. Most wants to open there.
Come on. That money.
Took the twenty thousand, four thirty.
Oh, yeah.
Four, but... Get the numbers, like... Can you give a solid waste?
There's a thirty thousand, what? Take your damn.
Give all that money to solid waste, too. Anything you want to do after one mark? I've passed, Jim, and only there's a good chance they're going to be able to get out of value to pay that.
There's a real good chance of that.
Yeah.
Do you want to change county clerk?
Gary, I need to mind it. All the waste. It's a zero, solid waste, but then I wanted to litter control to be... Want all the waste recycling, zero, and want litter control... I still got some money.
Use my solid waste recycling. Seven. A hundred.
Yeah, we are under each other. Or up here between. Okay, I'll skip. Start to pop and go down. Talk about. Pretty cute. Yeah, there you add something, other thing, maybe. Seventy-three, thirty.
Right.
And I think just for point, Mr. Barnhart, here, as it stands and as you're working right now, you're fully funding the requests of all your internal elected departments minus your...
No problem with that.
Okay, with no additional staff.
Problem.
Produced your regional jail bill by a million, not funded the request I made for... Dollars each. Four thousand, didn't fund forty-five thousand at IT, didn't fund thirty thousand for a one county commission. We'll survive, but just for purposes of conversation, we owe the member personally the... Of themselves. Or to... Go back or something, and you shouldn't, but I knows, do. And... It worked or not?
That's true. Right.
So, the county clerk made a mistake in his civil service. Where, I'll be sure. He asked for five thousand, seven fifty, he meant to ask for fifteen thousand, seven fifty. Eliminated ten thousand dollars of professional services where if the civil service needs a lawyer, they hire him. I live the opinion, even though he made a mistake, you should fund it, it's ten grand, uh, so I'm going to make this ten, five, seven, fifty. He asked for ten thousand, five, seven, fifty. Um, but, so if you want to fund him, he's requested we be... Eric, where are, Sherry sent an email, um... Obviously. I would fund him if I would...
You could put it up.
I could modify your community. Putting her...
It's saying enough to date it.
That's just my opinion, but...
Steve, that's an awesome idea. I don't know where you come up with that, but man.
I'm sure Brady too.
I would do it, it should be at sixty-eight degrees.
And I'm still shopping for a heater jack. Facebook marketplace, I see brand new ones.
There, you probably got long johns on over there.
It come down, imagine. I didn't want to get nothing, they talking with me.
Go back and get that, take that out, and continue to see if you can...
I'm going to... But we said... Eight thousand, right? In danger. If it brings other hazards...
Oh, search.
That was a margin.
Oh, really?
There's a little play in there. Automatic change. So, if the, have that discussed with... Effort, I believe Mr. Whitaker's asking, is anybody comfortable funding the health department in fifty? On, that you're trying to do that.
I was just thinking, on, on any of them. That would, it would be, set up with me having a thousand, at a hundred, eighty, I don't know.
What it would do, it would show us what yours had to be to get them in.
Yes, I mean, it would show us all contributing the same, all the entities, that agency, if we, like, where I'm at, um, alternatives to violence, I'm at five thousand, you're at... Got an average of eight, so, uh, Gary would take that eight thousand and put it across the board, we would be eight.
So we can, we can go back and do that, and then we'll up what you have left over in your individuals, you can do that now. So, let's just say, if you started to talk, once everybody's numbers are plugged in, which they are, and if you agree to the consensus, if we can go back and flatline the number, it will fix the average, and it will give you more to spend in other departments, that's what I want.
Would you want to see what I'm getting at?
Yeah.
But that sounds...
So, Mr. Whitaker and HD, you both have residual, you want to plug them now, or you want to leave it alone and start to toss?
Leave it alone, I, what I have for residual, I think.
Okay, so, the consensus for county commission is, I can fund them with no increase, as asked, is everybody comfortable there?
Oh. That, if that's what we're going to... Up line, up line at least. That'd be the school pop, because I... That's what it... That's good. Got a match in the book? I will be more here for the brief. They do work with... That's adverse skew, adverse skew in...
Hundred and five thousand, you got to go to...
Down, down.
Say, you got to get it in five. Have what you wanted, H B.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, I, I think that's better than nothing, and, and, like I said, there are alternative programs, there's programs like, like the, uh, Boys and Girls Club for athletic kids and things like that, those, those kids are different, they're... Usually they're not into other things, and they're still at risk, just like anybody else, and I think there's, really isn't any other programs more than, I think that's a good program. Let's say I have a match.
Okay, so, county commission, again, I'm reducing what I asked for, all funded it at where it is today, nine, what they in nine ninety-one, nine ninety-two, it's there. County clerk, funding them what they asked for, everybody's at nine ninety-eight, eight oh three. Circuit clerk, the same, million, two fifty, eight, but he's the same. Tax office, eight, one eight, all the same. Testing, testing group, platform, two, eight, twenty-nine, all the same. Professor, a billion, oh sixty, one, one forty, all the same. A Y computer network, one fifty, all the same. There's tax processing, hundred twenty-two thousand, all the same. Eighty-seven, ninety-three, all the same. Uh, ag agent, one twenty, ninety, all the same. magistrate, current elections, seven, seven, eight. All the same. magistrate court, five thousand, they're all the same. Um, your court marshals, a billion, seven seventy-one, one seventy-two, all the same.
Gary, where does the money go towards?
That's the rent, so, you get seventy-five thousand dollars of rent from the state, from magistrate court, on the expense side, you have to budget seventy-five thousand, base and, it'll be out of it, it doesn't do anything, typically, that's left, nothing's spent out of, out there.
No change.
Oh. A sweet make. Uh, um, marshals, staying the same, what was asked for. Odeon, you're all the same, what was asked.
That's... Turn.
That's correct. So, that's a hundred percent to the exact... Um, civil service, uh, the things we just made, asked for fifteen thousand, seven fifty, you funded fifty. courthouse account, you remember, I asked for, I asked for three hundred, but we already reduced that to three hundred and fifty. Um, debt service, I was in for a seven in the other day, that is the absolute bottom of your debt service. I T, I asked five thousand and change more.
Clarify the debt service, that amount, that service now on...
I should do. But we hope to fund that out of... Because we, on the revenue, we've already done that, okay, with the, uh...
Odeon, odeon, go ahead.
I was at forty-eight. I asked for forty-eight with just a hundred thousand dollar cushion, that's one of the accounts that historically, we've added just a little bit, in case that we need something in there, pops up. That is within twenty grand of what you have, that's high. You make it, it'll be okay, and that doesn't scare me. Uh, I T, all the same. Nine, that's a mandatory calculation, you don't have a choice, all the same. Museum commission? Is this Ann in there right here? Um, museum commission asked for one forty-nine, two hundred, eight hundred and twenty-five. Everybody still good there?
Still good, still playing.
Main Street Market Burnt asked for forty. Um, average is nine. Everyone liked the average, so I'll plug it across.
Probably.
Okay with nine, Jim?
I'm good.
Yeah. Eddie, that's a text from the magistrate. Okay, too. All right.
Find us somewhere.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. So, airport was another one where you're all different, uh, they asked for three hundred, the average is one seventy. Got a tight budget, but there... That's... That's sealed. Think that will be... Yeah, I'll put, I'll take it down to, uh, I'll do the one seventy, take it, and then I'll put some... Pay costs. All enforcement, that's what was asked for, plus some operating, that service will... You know, three million... Three million, two fifties, where it was, dropped to now almost a million. Go on, see the spreadsheet, I'll be... And it is an issue. And we'll have to, we'll save, make, make some...
No.
Ten of them. That win. Or...
Arm.
Arm.
Not paying it.
The rate. That was, that was the thought behind, thought process. She's just trying to stir the pot, basically. So, the increase of the first period, correct? Some are kind of built that way, too, that... Trying to stir the pot. Firing session.
There's some of those counties that aren't, that don't allow bonds, out in the middle part of the state, they called that bail bonds thing, and they cut their whole throttle out of it.
Tax dollars per capita. Funds are there. There, I don't think it's our responsibility either, because of nothing more than, nothing, nothing more than many penitentiaries, that's what they were called when it first... They don't depend. Hotel bill versus... Um, home confinement, funded it, asked it... Terms as requested. Um, higher department and emergency service. That one, and I didn't say it earlier, I said it the other day, those are with the modified, all of their payment, apartments are full. This number right here, this is the number one center money. Idea, have thirty thousand dollars... Idea, have thirty thousand dollars. This, this fund is structured. So, used revenues on the other side. That's always an option for you. Um. Everything's, everybody's getting their hands, right now, Mr. Barnhart, that, uh, gladly can do that exercise.
Okay. Maybe my side. That's okay. Maybe just make it, uh... Okay, can you Mr. Barnhart?
That's a really important thing.
They, um, DRC is four million, oh twenty-five, three seventy-three as asked. Uh, can you alternative to the vows they ask for twenty? Average is eight. Mr. Whittaker and Barnhart are five. Eight or ten. Eddie Steve H. D. two one five.
Six ten.
Five five. That's H. D.'s. Um... Everybody's Jim. Um, nobody asked. Health Department, when they ask, they ask for a hundred. Over the eight. Fifty-one, six, first one, just at ninety. Oh, we got a player in here now that represents that board that was here.
And he, and he said he was gonna...
You're, you're telling me they have money?
Don't forget, they give you money. Getting ready to put that in the bank. Or a year.
I mean, if you were saying that, then I'm willing to go less than a hundred. Eighty. Eighty. Building, the ID. Reinspector, you gotta get it expressed.
They're going up.
Hey, look, see what he said? And they're going up.
You didn't end up your mouth.
Jim just said every smile. Recovery of resources was they asked for, um, so here's a, here's... Here's your first big one where everybody's zero, Mr. Barnhart, seven recycling. They asked, they asked for one seventy-five, one twenty-five.
Want to say this, I did. Budget one seventy-five this year. It up users. Talked to, uh, I think. Got a lot of grant money, why they only get forty? But I really agree with the all chains and the... I don't think we should budget anything. I can, they are the need for it.
Probably there's something somewhere in case you need it.
Probably not.
Money somewhere for. So, what can we do?
Just said he dropped his zero too. Right? I'm not speaking for him.
No. As long as there's something you're...
Trouble talking after your...
Well, yeah. There's, so as we have...
I should pardon.
Make a mental note, Mr. Barnhart, as we speak, there's zero in contingency. But we work down at the end of this, in your mind and heart, remember? Better control for solid waste than fifteen. Uh, that's the two thousand, like I told you, that's your team, that buys their best, and, uh, two thousand. Uh, hotel motel is, is projecting one point one billion, so that's a split. Porch and Rad, the next one to... Fund, ask for one ninety, um...
The consensus is...
On one eighty-six. This is the general fund for Porch and Rad. They ask for one ninety. Barnhart, four...
Oh, and you, Steve, you did a hundred.
We're still cutting them, uh, we're still cutting them a hundred and eight. Consensus, as if they stand a hundred, we're still cutting them one eight. Tell them what it was. But it ain't me.
Uh, you, you know what's going on.
Thank you. What do you think?
I just, I just put my, my balance on. That's how I...
H. D. on the minimal table, modify the consent. At least it... One oh one, one eighty-six. Make it nine. Yeah. Hotel, hotel. Hotel, hotel. But we're okay leaving, uh, capital at zero for them? And Rock School asked for fifty thousand, H. D. five, the consensus, five.
The first time they take...
I would... I, um... Although asked for one eighty, uh, Mr. Barnhart had given them thirty, everyone else is zero. Come out, Jim, last...
Uh, that was just my preliminary thing when I came... Well, I, I just say, like, we, we said, you know... If they could come up, they come up, oh, they have that money, move bonded. Oh, they had that.
Cause they're not using appropriate head or...
One seventy-seven.
Anything like that. It was just a, uh, capital one time expense.
With sound systems, they asked for one eighty, the sound system, one seventy-seven. Oh, but, whatever. But we don't put that in there, that's... That's only if they come up, we're gonna take it out of, uh, coal services if they can come up with, uh, right? On the margin.
Uh, Boys and Girls Club asked for fifty-four, um... Close, any idea of the consent? Five hundred.
I'll do it.
Consensus is six, here at ten. But five, I think we need ten this past year. Eight, uh... Do appreciate every print. Proud of it. Thank you, Steve. Proud of it. It is having a moment to walk out of this room. One penny. Well, averages can be... Averages get to be...
No, I'm just saying...
Oh.
I, I'll, I'll do ten.
Got it. No. Uh, Roundhouse, everybody funded them for the best, um, the working cannon asked for sixty. Still think that's... Wasn't until last year we ever got it.
I wanted to give them last year five.
I don't have a say. Got it? County State Apple Harvest asked for five and it's all zeros?
I would ask.
The Forest Festival?
Forest Festival up in Delkens. County State Forest Festival. Pre-October. Actually, last year we gave them more, haven't you? Love it. Port District said they're ready.
Yeah, I gotta be down there.
Is the pipe game?
Yeah, yeah, today, and I...
Now, they're gonna unload a different program.
I'm unloading it here.
Okay, tomorrow.
I need to... Ain't unlocked, do you know?
Nobody did, right? I'll give you it. Four million with... Go on Apple Harvest, a landmark seventy-three hundred. Place still good. I bring my forty.
Here, does that go up how much?
It went up by almost just under two million thousand, I can think.
This year it wasn't that much.
Um...
That's the answer to that match. They, they wanted a hundred and fifty thousand, we just tell, take it out of the addition.
I told them how she didn't like it. Um, Mules on Wheels asked for five. Consensus thirty-one. Mr. Barnhart and Catla at five, fully untaping.
That is, um... I don't even nourishment of the food, but just...
Everything.
Steve, I live with him.
C. Cap. Speaker's going up to five. Everybody else want to be at five?
Yeah, C. Cap does, they have wonderful...
Uh, Hospice asked for twenty-five hundred. That...
Surprise they didn't ask.
Hundred is the...
They do an awesome job.
In the consensus.
They do raise a lot of money. Yeah, about ninety percent of the pitchwork is, uh, vessels and little flowers, hospice.
Bossa asked for twenty thousand dollars, uh, consent, five hundred.
I'll be proud.
Uh, Senior Services asked for seventy, the consensus, five, all at twenty-five. And Transit Authority asked for one fifty, all at seventy-five. And seven, seven hundred and fifty, it's service. See the top, where you're at.
I don't feel bad.
I was just... If I, if we went down, I'm gonna have... Bombs are good. Close, it looks like... Oh, it's contingency is where it's at, H. D. I'm sure of it. Uh, yeah, it's all over right here. So, if we flat fund, is there anywhere else, anything, other than just plugging contingency in? Um... Got differences, we, you know, everything. All should be the same.
Well, consensus is all.
Let me fix, ma'am, let's put contingency at, we'll just call it a hundred.
Put it on a hundred, see what it does.
One. There. Now, but they're all the same, that's what's left.
All the same.
That's exactly what you want to see. Do you want to plug, make contingency two oh nine, one eighty?
Yeah. All the way.
We're talking, we're in stone.
Yeah, I'm thinking, take the, that's not much. Take the nine, one eighty, put it up into our, uh, head service.
That's the same. We're balanced, hey, at fifty-one million, oh forty-four, four ninety-six.
Hopefully, what's for that?
So, in the form that the state sends, the very first thing I do is move numbers from calculation over to levying form. There are billion dollar numbers. All says instructions, and it clearly tells you to move this one number. So, when I called, just to have her check my numbers for purposes, that'd be ready for the public. It was odd, she said, well, we don't need that. Form, so she walked me through this number, she said, tell me what's there. I said, better not. Everybody does. Well, you're just, if you move, so now, you don't have to, don't have to have it public. Actually go up a little bit, and add another hundred grand, which would... Say at thirteen thirty-nine, at a public hearing.
They want to raise it, we would.
Oh, you could go up a little bit without a public hearing, that'll get you a hundred thousand dollars.
It, but then you have to tell the public.
It's not worth raising taxes.
No.
I'll go online and say we didn't raise. It, you literally did this without raising that. It was a, it was my guess, I'm like...
Not when you plug the numbers in before they're asking.
I wish you had that option last year. Yeah, well, I'd have done it last year.
I'd have voted for it last year.
It was a happy day.
Costs us eight hundred and some thousand.
A happy day in here. Everybody, we buy lunch.
I bought a hundred dollar lunch yesterday.
Bought everybody lunch yesterday. He's so happy.
Um, will we bring this with?
I didn't sleep well last night, where I... I slept like a baby last night, man.
I slept like a baby too, but I was up everywhere.
Hear that? I hear your eyes, I just want to watch.
You got your cheek.
No, that is not for that, that, I thought my secret...
Really? Actually...
That's my problem, I had enough of that standard language.
I had the coolest little nurse in the history of nurses.
I agree, a hundred.
Well, when I had mine, it was fun. I took it out myself.
Ooh!
Did?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh.
Out to the door.
I was gonna take a deep... Whoa! I couldn't come out of that bit, I was pretty smart shit out of it. I said, oh, my God.
Oh, man, it was, I had that kidney stone come down, so they left me out of the room, or, uh, a spin. Little number at the bottom, if you look at the top, bottom road, you're... On second page.
I, I don't have a number at all, is that right?
Cut it off?
Yeah, like, yeah, I don't know.
Hold on.
Give me the number.
I'll read it to you, hold on.
Bottom number's fifty thousand, eight ninety-eight.
Fifty million?
Fifty million.
That's it.
One ninety-eight.
This is the old one. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, must've clipped it on that one. Fifty million. Let me look at it.
Hold on.
Let me open it.
I'll hold fifty.
Hold on.
It's... Uh, fifty-two, one ninety-eight.
I want, me, I'm... Look at your things. You got this. Hold on.
It stops at public trades, it should have another, uh, two lines.
I did, it must've cut them off and pushed it a page, because I'm, I'm sorry.
Fifty-one, oh forty-four, ninety-six.
They gotta do pages too, right?
Yes, it's, it's... I'm, it's three pages, what it is, yeah. I probably just had to print the last page.
Oh, okay.
And this, the number is... That shirt on.
Turn over all of it.
Five pages of the other pieces coming. I just, I'll, I'll shoot myself.
Okay, we're concluding our budget workshop here today. Uh, we do have a balanced budget that we will be announcing here on Thursday with our elected officials. And, uh, so I guess we're concluded here for today, so have a motion to recess. Motion, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye. We are in recess.